State your name for the record and then address comments to the chair. Speakers are encouraged to keep their questions and comments to reports to one minute and questions or comments under residence, community concerns item under two minutes. And those giving reports are urged to keep their reports to three minutes or less, including questions and answers. And depending on your item section allotment, please silence all electronic devices in physical location and mute your mics on the virtual platform. Note, the board may take action only on agenda items as required by the state sunshine law HRS 92. Specific issues not noted on this agenda cannot be voted on unless added to the agenda. A two-thirds vote, five of this nine-member board, is needed to add an item to the agenda. Items may not be added if they are of major importance and will affect a significant number of people. And again, COVID-19 adjustment protocols due to the transition from all virtual to virtual meetings with a physical location, we will implement both in-person and online courtesy and procedures during the virtual meeting. Please again mute your device when you are not speaking or requesting to speak. Mahalo. So moving right along to agenda item number three, city emergency and first responder reports. Um, so first we have Honolulu Fire Department.
Good evening. My name is Jason Mitsioshi. I'm the captain at the Y N I fire station on second watch. So our incident statistics for June 2, 2023, we had zero structure fires, three wildland and brush fires, 12 nuisance alarms which are rubbish fires, one cooking fire and one activated alarm with no fire. We had 143 medical alarms and none of the following motor vehicle collisions. We had one mountain rescue, one ocean rescue, and one hazmat incident. A fire safety tip is grilling safety. They want you to always use barbecue grills outside away from doors, windows, fence, and other building openings. Place the grill well away from sliding and deck railings and from under eaves and overhanging branches. Keep children and pets at least three feet away from cooking areas and keep starter food, lighters, and matches out of children's reach. Cook with caution, be alert, and stay at the grill while cooking. Never leave it unattended. Light a propane grill only with the cover open. If the flame on the propane grill goes out, turn the grill and gas off and wait at least five minutes before relighting. Hierarchically, remove grease or fat buildup in the trays below the grill so it cannot be ignited by a hot grill. Let the coals completely cool before disposing in a metal container and do not dump them in a trash can. Do not store, use a grill on a porch or balcony, especially on the upper level of a building. Always store propane gas tanks outside of buildings or garages. Remember to properly inspect, maintain the tank fittings and tubing according to the manufacturer's instructions, and vapors leaked indoors can easily be ignited by a pilot light or electrical equipment causing an explosion. Any questions?
Uh, Koko Hu.
Check, check. Thank you, Tiana. Uh, thank you, LT. Uh, just wanna applaud each of the for you guys' due diligence and the service that you folks provide in keeping Y N I Moku people safe as well, as much as you guys can do. Um, so my question was, in one of the cases, there was a vehicle that was burnt down at Kalva'ula. I believe it was the other day. Was that implemented on this, um, on this paper that you folks were talking about? And my other question was, the mountain rescue, where was it? Was it up Ka'ala? Was it up Makua or Makaha Valley?
Um, the vehicle fire you're speaking about, do you know the date? Because these are for June, so, um, I don't know.
Okay. Yeah. It was just the other day then. It was just the other day. It was at Kalva'ula.
For next month then.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, the mountain rescue, I'm not sure exactly which mountain it was. It might have been on another watch that was working.
So during your folks' past experiences, mountain rescues, is it? I'm just trying to figure out which mountains usually, would it be Ka'ala or would it be, you know, Puakala or would it be Makaha?
Yeah, it could be any one of those mountains. Anywhere there's a trail, so, um, you have a lot of visitors, you have a lot of locals going up through all the trails in all the mountains. Um, could be any one of those. Could also be, um, the Panapoint Trail. So it doesn't have to necessarily be a mountain rescue, it just could be a hiking trail and it would just be considered as a mountain rescue, a high-angle rescue. So any of these mountains that has trails on it is basically, um, where we could perform those rescues.
Thanks, LT. I was just trying to figure out of all these mountain ranges, which one was the most prevalent with rescues? Mahalo.
Okay.
Uh, we have board member Wilbur.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, mahalo for you guys' service, uh, HFD. On the Makai rescue, um, what time was that and was Ocean Safety there to assist in that or were you guys there to, um, take over for Ocean Safety?
I'm sorry, on which rescue?
The Makai, the ocean, you had one ocean rescue, right?
Oh, yes. Um, that one, I'm not sure about the specifics either. I'm, that might have been on another watch. These are just, uh, the statistics for the month. That doesn't necessarily mean that, um, I personally responded to it or haven't much knowledge about it. But, um, I could find out and the, um, department can get back to you on the specifics of it. But right now, I'm not sure exactly which rescue that was, um, specifics of it.
Thank you. If you could do that, we'd appreciate it.
Okay.
Any other board members? Anybody in person? Um, well, I just wanna say mahalo for your service, um, as I had to make a call recently, um, for somebody I thought needed help in Pililau Park, and your response was great, and I just appreciate all that you guys do. And even in your busy schedules, you guys still made it a point to come to our community events and things, um, for our youth. I just appreciate you guys and your work. Mahalo.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. We're moving to HPD, Honolulu Police Department. Okay, so we, if they come on, then we will, we will go back. Um, but for right now, we will move right along to board business. Um, agenda item number four and into election of officers to serve from July 1st, 2023 to June 30th, 2024. So first, um, any nominations for Chair? Board Member Vahilani?
Yes, I.
After Vahilani, then we'll go to Johnny May.
And I'm gonna Jonathan Ho'omana Vanui as Chair.
Mahalo. And Board Member Perry?
Um, what I wanted to ask, there's some board members did not attend the swearing-in. Are they sworn in tonight?
Had, um, did it before the meeting started.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. I nominate, um, for Chair, Philip Ganaban. Thank you.
Sorry, I have to decline due to, um, school requirements.
Okay. Any other nominations?
I just wanna, second nomination for Jonathan.
Mahalo. Um, so.
So if there's no more any nominations, I'll do a roll call vote and you say the name of the person that you would wanna vote for. Since the only person here is Jonathan, you would just say his name. I'll start with, um, Cross Grab.
Hi.
You need to say the name.
Jonathan.
Thank you. Kelvin Endo. Philip Ganaban.
Jonathan.
Um, Richard Lanford. Kaukohu Vahilani.
Mr. Ho'omana Vanui.
Kalae Wilbur.
Wilbur.
Tiana Wilbur.
Jonathan Ho'omana Vanui.
Johnny May Perry.
Upstate.
I'll say it.
Myself.
Cool. Um, congratulations, Chair.
Okay, and then moving on to Vice Chair, any nominations for Vice Chair?
Chair.
I think he.
Go ahead, Johnny May.
Um, the new chair takes over from here on. We change seats.
So scoot, scoot that side, Chair. Um, for the second order, I'd like to nominate, um, Tiana. You still got her?
Yeah. Sorry.
Wait, let Jonathan get settled to make it official.
Okay. Um, for Vice Chair, I'd like to nominate Tiana Wilbur as Vice Chair.
I second the nomination.
I would like to nominate, um, Vahilani.
So we got two nominations. Vice Chair Vahilani, also Tiana Wilbur. Okay, at this time, uh, the nominations are closed. Okay.
So I'll do a roll call vote. Um, your choices are Kaukohu Vahilani and Tiana Wilbur for Vice Chair. When I call upon your name, say the name of the person that you wanted to, wanna fill in as Vice Chair.
Um, I have information. Um, on here, it says we're able to, um, one or more. Oh, on the here, it says we could have one or more vice chairs on the agenda. Do we have to move to?
So we can go ahead and do first Vice Chair.
Let's do the first first.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
So this first one, if the board decides to do two vice chairs, a first Vice Chair and second Vice Chair, we'll do a first Vice Chair first. So for the, for the position of first Vice Chair, um, say the name of the person that you want, either Kaukohu Vahilani or Tiana Wilbur. Uh, cross, grab.
Um, okay. Kaukohu Vahilani.
Kelvin Endo.
Tiana.
Miss Tiana Wilbur.
Richard Lanford.
Tiana Wilbur.
Johnny May Perry.
Vahilani.
Kalae Wilbur.
Tiana Wilbur.
Jonathan Ho'omana Vanui. Um, Kaukohu Vahilani.
Tiana Wilbur.
And Tiana Wilbur.
Tiana Wilbur.
Seven for Tiana Wilbur, two for Kaukohu Vahilani. First Vice Chair is Tiana Wilbur. And so for second Vice Chair, we'll do the same thing for second Vice Chair, you just need to state his name since he's the only one. I'll cross grab.
Upstate.
Uh, Kelvin Endo. Philip Ganaban.
Vahilani.
Richard Lanford.
Vahilani.
Johnny May Perry.
Vahilani.
Kalae Wilbur.
Vahilani.
Tiana Wilbur. Jonathan Ho'omana Vanui. And Kaukohu Vahilani.
Upstate.
Seven, zero, two abstentions. Congratulations, second Vice Chair.
Chair Ho'omana Vanui, I nominate, uh, Mr. Wilbur to be my secretary. Any other nominations? Any second? Second nomination. Okay. Any other nominations? Hearing none? Nominations are closed? Yeah, roll call.
So again, I'll do a roll call vote, um, Kalae Wilbur as Secretary. Cross grab. Kelvin Endo.
Wilbur.
Philip Ganaban.
Mr. Wilbur.
Richard Lanford.
Kalae Wilbur.
Johnny May Perry.
Upstate.
Uh, Kaukohu Vahilani.
Kalae Wilbur.
Tiana Wilbur.
Kalae Wilbur.
Um, Kalae Wilbur.
Myself.
And Jonathan Ho'omana Vanui. Eight, zero, and one abstention. Congratulations, Secretary.
Thank you so much. Uh, the Chairman, also I nominate as a treasurer, Mr. Endo. Second. It has been moved in second. Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Nominations, nominations are now closed.
So once again, um, roll call vote, state the name of the person you want as treasurer, Mr. Endo. Um, cross grab.
Stand up.
Um, Philip Ganaban.
Mr. Endo.
Richard Lanford.
Mr. Endo.
Johnny May Perry.
Endo.
Kaukohu Vahilani.
Mr. Kelvin Endo.
Kalae Wilbur.
Mr. Endo.
Tiana Wilbur.
Mr. Kelvin Endo.
Jonathan Ho'omana Vanui. And Mr. Endo.
Chair.
Yes, Vahilani.
I'd like to nominate Philip Ganaban as Sergeant at Arms.
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
It has been moved and seconded, nominating, uh, Ganaban as the Sergeant at Arms. Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Nominations, nominations are now closed.
So again, I'll do a roll call vote for, um, Sergeant at Arms Philip Ganaban, state the name of the person you want as Sergeant at Arms. Cross grab. Kelvin Endo. Richard Lanford.
Ganaban.
Johnny May Perry.
Ganaban.
Kaukohu Vahilani.
Mr. Philip Ganaban.
Kalae Wilbur.
Mr. Ganaban.
Tiana Wilbur.
Philip Ganaban.
Jonathan Ho'omana Vanui. And Philip Ganaban.
Myself.
Congratulations.
Okay, at this time, uh, we're gonna move along to board, uh, same thing, the board business on 4.2, which is the meeting date, the time, and the location and format, online component. Any suggestions?
Chair, uh, I, I move to keep it first Tuesday, same location, um, here at the Y N I District Park at 6:30.
A second. It has been moved and seconded. Any other suggestions?
Can I add?
Go ahead.
Okay, um, um, same time, location, also to include the online, um, what we have now on Zoom or WebEx as well.
Yes, I did say that. Online component. Online component. So that means, uh, there's no changes.
Right.
Okay. It has been moved and seconded, and you're gonna take it by a roll call vote. Anybody objecting to the, uh, same meeting place, time, and day? No objections at this time. Uh, the motion is carried that we keep the meeting date, time, location, and format online component. Moving right along.
Chair, sorry, Chair, can, um, can I bring up about, um, in December, you know, that, Andrew Topola had that, had that, um, she had that town hall with, with Steve Arm, Prosecutor Steve Arm, as well as, uh, Major Mike Lambert, and they're already set up for six months that they're gonna come back, because that's what, um, Major Mike Lambert said, that given, given six months, so Andrew, Councilwoman called him on that, and they're actually gonna, they got it set in six months, and that day is gonna be in December, it's gonna be in the first Tuesday. So can I, can I make a suggestion, I'll make a motion that we table, we table, yeah, we recess that month of December so that we all can, we all can join that. To me, I think that's very important that we all show up at that and to see, uh, what HPD and what, um, Major Mike Lambert has, has put in the work and, you know, to hold him to that.
Okay, Koko, are we talking about 4.2 meeting date and time or are we moving on to 4.3 determination or recess schedule up to three, three times per year?
Recess.
Recess.
Okay. Any objections to move that, uh, to the recess on that specific date? What is the date on that one?
It doesn't matter. Oh, wait.
That'll be December 5th. That'll be the 5th of December.
Okay, as noted, uh, board members, um, if everybody agrees, um, we're gonna vote on this because in order to get this on the agenda, we have to vote on it, yeah?
So I make a motion that we, we recess our annual meeting in December?
It has been moved and seconded that we, uh, reschedule that, um, December, uh, to become a recess. Any objections to that? All in favor? Say aye.
Perry, aye.
Any oppose? Nay. Motion is carried for the December, uh, Tuesday, uh, meeting. Thank you very much. Moving right along.
Okay, um, Chair, so it says three, three per year, so we can table 2024 recess at that point in time, so the December is all agreed, so we can move on if is, if there's no objection to 4.4. Thank you.
What do you mean by, uh?
We can have three recesses, so we, we took care of December.
Okay, that's one.
Yeah, yeah, so we can.
One is the other two.
No, we can, if you want, we can decide next year, if you want.
Okay. All right. Moving right along.
That's a board pleasure.
Thank you, Perry. Yeah. Okay, moving right along. The adoption, 4.4 adoption of oral testimony rules. Any suggestions? Board members? Go ahead. Go ahead.
Um, for testimony, um, three minutes, one round, okay? What we occur month after month is the length, people just go on talking like, you know, way beyond unnecessary. So when you come up to speak, you have three minutes. We'll give everybody a chance to speak, and if there's something like a follow-up question, it may be one minute, and then so that we can move on the agenda and everybody that is, um, be heard and based on the agenda being completed and finishing on time. That would be my suggestion. Thank you.
Yes, Mrs. Perry, it's usually two minutes, however, I do have a better suggestion, not better suggestion, I have a suggestion that if they wanna come and share the testimony at the signing table, I move that they write what they're gonna talk about, bring it to the secretary up here, and then we're gonna look at what they wanna talk about so we can kinda control the time and have a effective time management, uh, system going on. So, um, I think it'll be better, um, to keep it at two minutes, however, it'll give them a chance to rebut, but I don't think they'll do that, and here's why. Because when they come in to sign up, they come in to put down their question that they wanna ask, and we can address it, because sometimes, um, some people are more rhetoric, some people are more oral, uh, specific, and that takes up a lot of time. So I'm looking at time management here with the board, and we should be on this board only an hour and a half tops total. I've been here three and a half hours, four hours, four and a half hours everywhere, and I was, I was thinking it's, it's too long. So I suggest, I'll make a motion right now, I move that they come up. All right, I'll pass the gavel on. One of my board members can move that we, um, make them sign in, write the suggestion, bring them up to the secretary, please.
Chair, I make a motion for our community members to fill out our sheet we have at the sign-in table with their concerns and questions or what they would like to talk about so we can try and control the meeting, and they will bring it up to our secretary, uh, which is Board Member Kalae Wilbur, and then it will be put forth, um, so that we can control the time, so.
Second. Cross grab. Okay, it has been moved and seconded, everybody heard what we said, make sure you come up, you got something to say, please put it down, write it down, bring it to the meeting, give it to the secretary. Any oppose? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye. Motion is approved. Thank you. Right along.
Um, Chair, sorry, cross here.
Go ahead, cross.
Um, I also wanted to make a small suggestion. I don't know if it goes along with, um, the motion that was just approved, but really quickly. So we also have some situations sometimes where, um, people may come late or people just wanna bring up, um, the same subject again because they may not have heard it before. So I just wanted to make a suggestion that if we already spoke about, uh, discussion or a topic of discussion in the meeting, that we don't have to go over it multiple times.
Aw, thank you so much, uh, Cross Grab, uh, but that gonna be controlled by the Chairman, so if, if we did talk about us, not only the Chairman, it's gonna be controlled by the entire board that we have here in Y N I, and when they come up and had talked about it, it's gonna be a real quick 10-second, uh, thank you very much, but we did discuss that already. If you have any questions, please see us after the meeting.
Amazing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair.
Yes, Ms. Perry.
If someone be. If someone refuse to write, we, we still can allow them to speak, you know?
Yes, and so, um, that is with this questionnaire.
So just to be clear, even though they refuse, or they're not able to write.
Okay.
For whatever reason, they still have an opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Yes, with this questionnaire. Thank you very much.
Chair.
With this questionnaire.
Mr. Lanford, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, what I'm familiar with, Chair, and I don't know if it's gonna help, but when they come up and they state their issues or their concerns, uh, I'm familiar with, once we have our committee meetings established, and if that person, um, falls under that, whatever category it is, uh, can we refer that person to attend a committee meeting, so they can be addressed, uh, in its full realm, at the committee meetings, and, and, uh, who, whoever's chairing the meeting, um, can, uh, uh, assign or try to get couple of, uh, us board members to try to address that situation for that particular person. Um, I noticed going through the, uh, sunshine law, that we should and we need to let the community person that comes up, uh, say as much as he or she needs to, to, um, uh, address the situation that she's here, that they're here for, so, uh, I, is, is a suggestion that, um, uh, this board, um, tries to refer that person to one of all committees, if, if, if and when it's established. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Lanford. Um, we're gonna, we're gonna be flexible, at the same time, we're gonna be kind and nice to people. Uh, we know how, how people come in and, and do that, and so I'm glad that you brought those pointers up, and, um, so we, we can look at the time and adjust, we can, like you said, it's very good, uh, uh, thing to do is, is refer them to the committee, where the committee can actually, uh, absolve and, and talk about everything that they have to talk about, because it's specifically for that, that committee. Uh, however, I, I do, um, have compassion for people, um, and, and to come up if they wanna speak on the mic, that's fine. I'm just trying to get everybody in the mindset, and gear them to, when you come in, let's take a look at what you have to say. Ten of them might have the same things, and we all understand that, but the secretary and the board members can kinda look through the process, and say, hey, you know what, this is really important, this is what needs to be done. Thank you, Lanford. Okay, moving right along to four point five designation of board committees and committee chairs.
Do I have a question? I'm sorry, I have a question on the write-up. Uh, is that to be forwarded to the, to the NCO office, the write-ups?
Everything, because everything we do on this board is, is gonna be logged in on, on the minutes, and, uh, the minute is, is already forwarded, because we got a NCO sitting right here that's also doing the minutes. I'm just having my secretary, um, double back, and, and I'm a, I'm a guy that, um, I want clear and precise, uh, statement. Sometimes, the NCO may not catch everything, but I gotta back up with, with the secretary, also writing a, a lot of information down, so that we get, we, we gotta, we got a good and clear and precise, uh, um, minutes. Thank you, Ms. Perry.
No, 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 the, the write-up with the question, the secretary reviews it, there's discussion, that write-up, does it go to the NCO office? The paper that the write-up is on, the concern from the resident, does that sheet of paper go to the NCO office?
Okay, that's my question to you. Ms. Perry, you've been on the board for a very long time, you helped me out on this one. Previously, did everything you say was forwarded to the NCO, and did the NCO office forward it over? Let me ask, there's an expert right here.
It has.
Okay.
But it was never done this way.
I talked to the NCO, and he said, you guys can give it to us. Is that clear? What is not necessary? Okay, Tiana?
Mahalo, so, um, the concerns and everything is, is very much valid, and our hopes in doing this, um, protocol and procedure is that we can help direct our community to the proper places and the proper channels, so that we can get those solutions and, um, these concerns resolved. So whether we as a board are gonna reach out on our committees, maybe we'll just distribute it to the committees, if we have everybody chairing a committee, um, and then also, we could also CC it to NCOs, so that it's, it's also recorded, but it's also not necessary that they would keep a record of it. But I think as board members, as public servants here serving our community, we would want this information in our hands, so that we can better serve our community to our fullest capacity. Um, so that's really the, the vision that we see moving forward, is that we are diligently looking through these, these items, it's not just gonna be pushed under the rug or forgotten, these are, these are record documentations of your requests, and figuring out how as a community that we can resolve it. Um, so we're hoping to see, you know, positive strides forward in this, in this new, um, motion that we had just carried.
So, so to just for your, your information, there is a form, and we, we used to really push, people had a comment, comment or question, to write on it. It's not for, uh, official records, it's for the secretary, while the discussion is going on, he has a clear understanding what the person is asking or saying when he looks at the form, it is, but it's not gonna be turned in for, to be an official document that they keep or ever. It's mainly to help him when he recording, right, what the person really want, wanted to say. So, so there is a form that you can fill out, and that, that, that's why we really wanna enforce that, and we feel that it will help streamline all meetings.
Okay, at this time, we're gonna move along to four point five designation of board committees and committee chairs. Any suggestions?
Um, Chair, clarification, is this to elect or designate the chairs for the committees right now?
It's to create the committee and to, and volunteers chairs, yeah, for the committees?
Um, oh, I got, I know.
Chair, uh, so I would like to chair Department of Transportation?
Okay, anybody else wanna?
Um, I've, Chair.
Yes.
I would like to chair, um, homelessness.
Mr. Wilber, please write this thing down.
Chair.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to re-chair. Hawaii N F is.
Any other committees that gotta be filled?
Chair, I'd like to be recognized, but if someone else wants to talk before me, that's okay.
Okay.
Chair, Kalea Wilber, uh, I'd like to chair Park and Recreation.
Do we have all the committees, um, filled?
No, no. We got Education, Economic and Development, Business, and.
Okay.
Um, Chair, this is board member Crabbe.
Go ahead.
If no one else wants to do it, I will volunteer to chair Education as well.
Chair Richard Lanford.
Go ahead, Lanford.
Is, uh, is it possible to co-chair with, uh, Parks and Recreation?
Sure, I'd like that.
Also, um, if they don't conflict, I'd like to co-chair with, uh.
Parks and Rec.
The, um.
Or Transportation.
Transportation.
Okay.
And then, uh.
I believe these committees are open up to the public also, correct? Anybody out there in the audience would like to chair a committee? Not, not chair a committee, but it can be a sub-chair to the committee. Celcedo? Well, do you wanna be on a committee, or? I'm looking at. Park and Recreation?
Do you wanna co-chair?
Co-chair?
Cannot. Yep, I mean, okay, okay, yeah, yeah, member.
Members. Okay. Okay, member. Uncle, come on the mic, please, real quick, yeah?
Hello, testing one two. Because of the continent wheel, you're on the west side right now. Homelessness encompass the whole stretch.
Okay.
Because of resistance, we providing them assistance here, but they choose the direction of being homeless, okay? So it's impacting as well, too.
Okay.
And, uh, I would say a lot more about, I hope I understand the agenda. I thank you for this time, though. So what I'm thinking is, maybe you have to comprise certain things have to intertwine, but Parks and Recreation, uh, I take my hat off, these gentlemen, because we have to strengthen our Parks and Recreation, because there's an abundance of a lot of homelessness as well, too, okay? It goes on to the National Neighborhood Board as well, too, all the officials over here. I sit on boat.
Okay.
Not as an official, but as a community member.
Thank you, we'll take that in consideration, thank you. Thank you. Anything else? All committees feel?
Um, sorry, Chair, really quickly, I just wanted to clarify for the committee I volunteered for is Housing and Homelessness, just, not just homelessness. Thank you.
I wanna help, uh, co-chair the Education Committee, um, and, uh, gentlemen, don't mind, uh, we, we used to call it the Education and Safety Committee, 'cause we had, uh, addressed any kinda safety, safety issues that come on that community too.
Second.
So is all the, so, Mr. Crabbe. Um, clarify that again?
Oh, I, I second that the Education Committee is also called Education and Safety Committee, and, um, co-chair with Mr. Endo.
Okay, gonna vote on this second, any second on that? Okay, the second, that Mr. Endo co-chair with, with. We'll make a blanket one, we'll make a blanket, make, keep home simple, keep home simple, okay. Thank you, Mr. Crabbe. Uh, John, Chair recognizes John. State your name, John.
John Yuki Seino.
Okay, go ahead.
What do you mean by Park and Recreation Committee? What the, what authority do they have, if any?
Okay.
He should have voice, but.
Yeah, and, and so, that's gonna coincide with the county, and that's why we have all the committees set up, and that's a good thing, John, because now we have people being proactive in the community, as they be proactive, then we have more voices, so the people is the one that is the voices, yeah? Any other suggestions? And it's also documented.
And also, we haven't had a chair for the Parks and Rec Committee for a while, so now we'll have more representation of our board with the department.
Well, cool up with that, because, and then you really came here, I discussed it here, we homeless on top of the field for the past year. And then again, I talked to one guy in the back there, and he tell me, oh, talk to me, I talked to him, I shown videos. So now from one guy can't be, over here, there's two guys. Then we another question fast. This is over here. What's his name? Perry. Have a question, she cripple?
No.
So why she's at top there talking? Hey. I will my merry little ass, so come on here to be a part of this, to voice my, whatever. So you so be the example as a board member, to sit down there and respond. Was, not to where they turn off and suffer against you guys. That's my feelings. Hey, if you are on this board, then get your face out top here. I've been in one all my life, one or seventy years. So no go talk, talking at top here, chastising you false. Hey, you wanna get me, get down over here, sit down and face us, be real. The man go boss said, be real. So get down there and not talk at top there, you cripple, then eh, I cannot say nothing. But if you not, look at my friend, eh? He didn't walk inside, but, we just, barely can even walk, and he's fully covered over there, and he sits down. Hey, we can hand event twenty-four seven on this side. We get a pass. You, when I sit down over there and I see people like this talking a lot, yeah, but they not only facing the music, eh, they guess me. 'Cause I can take myself out of my comfort zone, get yourself out of my comfort, if you concerned about, if I lying, they get on there, face us personally, no talk at top here.
Thank you, John, appreciate it.
Well, give me, I didn't wanna be real. I am real.
Thank you, John.
I live this life, and I'm not time for messing around. Like I said, if I remove my merry little call it down here out of my comfort zone, then people should do the same thing. My friend Lanford, look, he barely walking inside here.
We'll take that into consideration, John. Thank you very much. Okay, since we designated the board committees and committee chairs, are we ready to move along?
Yes.
Okay, here we go. Okay, I need a motion to accept.
Make a motion to accept.
All the committees.
The regular meeting minutes.
Yeah.
Well, the committee.
Oh, sorry. Committees.
Yeah. Make a motion to accept the committees and the chairs.
Any second.
Second, Lanford.
It was moved and seconded, that we accept all the committee, um, volunteers and the chairs. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed?
Perry, aye.
Thank you very much. The motion is carried that we accept all the, the volunteers and committee chairs. Okay, moving right along, four point six. Thank you, Carol. Okay, moving right along, four point six, approval of regular meeting minutes, Tuesday, June sixth, twenty twenty-three. Do we have a motion?
Chair, I have one on the minutes, um, just a name change, um, my last name was L A N G, it should be L A N D, on my comments that I read.
Okay.
Let me see if I can find it for you.
So do we make the changes at the, on that minutes right now? We can, second?
So wait amendment is.
Okay, we can approve the, the minutes, uh, and make an amendment to that.
Thank you.
Chair, for correction, my hand is up.
Okay, go ahead, Perry. It's about the minutes.
Page, right, page two of five, under residents concerned, number one, it should be downtown neighborhood board member Armstrong, and not a resident, he's not a resident, but a downtown neighborhood board member.
Okay, that's the second amendment to the minutes. Okay, any other corrections to the minutes or amendments? Any more, uh, amendments to the minutes before we vote on it? One was Lanford's, uh, correction of, of his name and the spelling, and then the one that Mrs. Perry brought up, and also Chair recognized Celcedo.
Uh, Linda, need to bring up to the commissioners, the review on the video for the June minutes, it was short cut, it was not complete, eliminated all the legislatures. That was important. Making awareness to that.
Okay, we just got notification of that, according to the NCO. Thank you, Mrs. Celcedo, and, and that's why I brought it up earlier, that I have a secretary that's also taking notes for the minutes. It's very important. One guy cannot catch everything, even though he got two ears, you cannot catch them all. So we're gonna use four years, right? That's why my secretary is very vital and important to, to the Y nine Board. Thank you so much. Any other amendments?
Chair, I motion to approve our Tuesday, June. Chair, I motion to approve our Tuesday, June sixth, two thousand twenty-three, uh, minutes with the amendments and corrections.
Do we have a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve the minutes with the, with the amendments. All those in favor say aye? Any opposed, nay? Motion is carried that we approve the minutes. Okay. We're still gonna continue with board business. Community.
Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Johnny May has her hand up.
Johnny May? Johnny May? Ms. Perry? We cannot hear you. Yeah. Yeah, what's up from before? And that's why we like all board members to show up, so we not go through this, this gonna take another half an hour. Okay? This is where we lose time, the board needs to show up. I encourage you.
I don't think she realizes she's still muted.
She's still muted? We're gonna move right along, we're gonna come back to, to Johnny May.
But can they hear online, though? Chair, we gonna mark anybody in the chat?
She put her hand down. Okay, this time we're gonna continue with board business, because this is what I heard. There's a couple of issues in town, and the only way we can solve these problems, real quick, by chipping away at the edge of these rocks, is to take care of two things. This board needs to gain respect and needs to be in collaboration, in collaboration with the county. Okay, so we're gonna make a motion. The reason we're gonna make a motion to deputize this wine I bought. There's a reason for that, we're gonna talk about it. It allows us the authority to go out with the sound meter and take care of the sound issues. We're gonna work side by side with the police office, officers and the county, and here is why also. By working side by side, we can take care of all the small stuff. Deputizing the board will give us this, no gun carry, hang on, no gun carry, I'm bringing it up to the people.
So it's not on the agenda.
But we gotta vote on it to bring it on the next agenda. Okay, thank you very much. Okay. By two thirds vote, the reason why I wanna deputize this board, nobody has ever done this before. But why not gonna do? Okay, why not gonna do, gonna give us the power, no arrests, no take down, no guns. Limited powers, all we're gonna do is write reports. Because we under oath, it's a true statement by law. Everybody agree out there, you don't need to agree with me, which is what wine I bought gonna do, and we're gonna take care of some things like this. If guy calls up and turns around, tells me, hey, my dog went eat my livestock. It gives us the wine I bought, volunteer now, you don't have to. The whole board don't have to be deputized, but I would like to be previous officer for the county. We're gonna go out there, we're gonna write report, take pictures, send that to the police department, work side by side with the police department, wine I bought. Clap your hand louder, brother. This is called action. Okay, because we short of police officers. They come out for murders, guns, violence, this, the next, that, and that's all. But I'm taking it to the streets. We're gonna purchase a sound meter, don't give us authority to do that, we may not have to purchase that. We're gonna go to the liquor department, who's authorized to use those sound meters. And if you worried about training, I'll do all the training, I've done that before. Okay? So at this time, I would like to deputize this board, but I'm gonna have somebody motion that, gonna have a second, and we're gonna take it to the floor.
Chair, I have a question.
Okay, I got, I, I got, I got, I, I got a question, I, I'm gonna, you, you're gonna answer this question. The NCO said he don't know if it's allowed. The only way you gonna find out if it is allowed, people, is do them. Let them tell you that it's not allowed. See, you guys so afraid of stepping forward, not you, bro, don't take it personal. So afraid of stepping forward, that you waiting for everything happen, it doesn't work that way. Jonathan Homolongway.
Chair, point of order.
Is that an action kinda thing?
Chair, point of order.
Mrs. Perry, you should be right here, sitting next to me.
Chair, point of order, you need to stick to the agenda.
I recognize it, Mrs. Perry, this is, I'm gonna be nice to you, we are on an agenda. Okay?
No, you're not, I'm sorry.
This is board business, but it has to be voted on.
You diverting.
Chair, if I may.
Hang on, hang on.
If, if I may, okay, so when I started the meeting, I wrote and I read the note. The board may take action on any agenda item as required by the state sunshine law, H R S ninety-two. Specific issues not noted on this agenda cannot be voted on unless added to the agenda. A two thirds vote, five of this nine member board is needed to add an item to the agenda. Items may not be added if they are of major importance and will affect a significant number of people. So there is authorization for us to move an agenda onto the item, but we don't need to vote on it tonight. It is, we can go for a two thirds vote for five of nine members in order for, for us to add this to the agenda in the next upcoming meeting. And that is all that's needed. So with that, Chair, can I make a motion to move to deputize our board with minimal, um, capacity to help and work side by side with our police department, um, in moving our community forward to different, um, positive levels, um.
Perfect. Is there a second?
Second.
It has moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye?
Perry, nay.
Any opposed, nay?
Perry.
Your eyes have it, thank you, Miss, thank you, Mrs. Perry. Okay, let me, let me discuss what's gonna happen right now. Because we got disapproved at the board to put on the agenda, para, to put on the agenda for the next meeting, that's what we're gonna talk about with this community, this community need help. Every time I come over here, we stay four, five hours on these, these things over here, and nobody get solutions, I'm so sorry. Please don't take me personal, I love all you guys out there, but something needs to be done. Okay? And this is gonna open up the second motion. Five out of nine is not two thirds.
So how many voted?
All, we all voted.
We had one name.
There was only one name. Okay, thank you very much, sir, who do you work for? Okay, thank you very much. All right, so moving right along. This is the second thing I wanna discuss about, this is board business. The second thing is the traffic issue. According to the Hawaii Department of Transportation, did everybody read the plan? Let me read this to you, real quick. According to the Hawaii Department of Transportation, master plan, office, I'm gonna read the corrective action, it's on the four point one nine. Four point one nine, point three. Let me read the corrective actions. The Wahoo, MPO, CMP must analyze and identify the underlying causes of reoccurring and non-recurring congestion. Everybody experience that coming into Nanakuli? That's a big problem, causes road rage, causes people to pull their guns out and shoot people for nothing, because they're upset. It's only one aspect, it leads into all areas, I mean, let me, let me read, read along. Just stand by, guys, because this is very important. In order for action to take place, this is what we have to do. And I'm not just taking this and blowing smoke. So this comes from the twenty-three Code of Federal Regulations, four, five, zero, point three, two, four, F one. And it states this, the corrective action again. The corrective action states we need to identify and evaluate alternative strategies. There's two alternatives, Hallelujah is one. And by McDonald's in Nanakuli, if you turn right on that road, you can take a left. That road is gonna be open from five AM in the morning to six PM in the evening. That's the discussion. How can you disagree with that? You cannot. All of us gotta leave early, 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 come home, two hours we spend in traffic, that's a major issue. Okay? Board, if we can, let's move to, to, um, correct the, um, the traffic issue according to the Hawaii Department of Transportation Strategic Plan. This will allow us, after we move this and put it on the agenda for the next meeting, the next thing is to go get the keys to open the gates back there and find out who the owner is. That's how we're gonna do business, okay? I need a move, I need a movement and a second, please.
Chair. I'm sorry, point of information. Um, this might be for, um, Neighborhood Board Commission Officer. Um, for this type of thing, if it may not be exactly in our district, like our Neighborhood Board District, we can still have conversations about it.
You know, um, this board wants to do it. This board, if this board gets it on top of the agenda, Mr. Crabbe, the Nanakuli can learn from this board and do what they gotta do in Nanakuli. But Wine I Coast is Wine I Coast. It's all Wine I. HDOT, because they're under the umbrella of the state, doesn't, it, it, it doesn't mean that it's a state issue, it's this and that. Today, we, we living in a fast time of collaboration. So what we're gonna do with collaboration is we're gonna collaborate, because we represent county, we were elected people to this board by the county. And I think if we work together, according to the strategic plan, we do have leverage. I need a second, please.
Uh, Chair, so I would like to motion to move this onto the agenda, because there is discussion that is necessary for this. Um, there is a lot of things that, and knowledge, man, that needs to be passed on to the rest of our board members. In the likeliness of this happening, um, there's a lot of heavy discussion as far as why or why not roads can or cannot be open. So that needs to be passed along to all of our board members, so I move to, um, our traffic correction of corrective action, um, for alternative strategies, alternative strategies for us to put it on the next agenda.
Second. It has been moved and seconded, any discussion? Discussions, discussions, all those in favor say aye?
Chair, Chair.
Any opposed?
I have a discussion on that.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, this is Lanford.
Go ahead, Lanford.
I've been on Transportation Committee since two thousand and six. We worked, one of the major projects was, uh, the contra flow lane in two thousand and eight.
Yeah.
Which was, uh, put together and finally opened in two thousand and twelve. Uh, one of the main concerns we had at the time was, um, trying to find a bypass road that would eliminate, would eliminate Nanakuli Avenue, Haleakala Avenue, as well as Nanaikiola and, uh, Po, Haleakala. Only because the three major places didn't have a left turn lane at the time. Now, with the new, um, structure, that Nanakuli Avenue, as well as, uh, uh, as well as the, the marketplace as, and, and Haleakala, uh, there seems to be only one major, or actually two major places. But the discussion of opening, uh, that bypass road, um, has fallen, I, I wouldn't say deaf ears, because it, it, money allocation allocated to that area has been coming in, whether it's being used for that particular thing is, is, uh, i- 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 is where it's, uh, is hazy. So I continue to sit on the Nanakuli Board with the Transportation Committee. I have been there, uh, for the last two years, um, as a, uh, uh, designated UMPO person, uh, for Nanakuli Neighborhood Board, on, on, uh, but, um, the last month, I have not, uh, been active, uh, ever since the new board has been, um, elected. So I have not, uh, attended their meetings yet. I will be attending next meeting, which is next week, I presume. Um, but there is a lot of questions and there's a lot of, um, uh, pushbacks, I guess you call them. So, um, can I refer that we take this to the Transportation Committee once we get established there and see if we can find out what came first, that chicken or the egg, and, and then we can go forward from there. And, and I, I, I applaud your, um, you go get a matter to it and, 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 and like I said, I, I've been wallowing over this project since two thousand and twelve. But I also been wallowing over a project where we can have a direct, uh, lane or road or pathway out of Wine I, uh, through some sort of bypass road that would, uh, get away from all the traffic that we currently have on Farrington Highway. Farrington Highway i- is the disaster that we're stuck with. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you so much, and, um, I just wanna tell you, um, that that's why we're gonna put it on the agenda, so we can discuss with the community and get the community involved, because we're here to represent the people of Wine I and see how they truly feel about this alternate, um, um, route that we can use. And it's not overnight where we're gonna throw dump trash over there, people dump trash about between ten at night, because nobody on the road, to about three, four o'clock in the morning. So I wanna get this thing on the agenda and, um, so that we can move forward with this. Thirteen years is too long, Uncle, two thousand and twelve, shit, ten of that years is twenty twenty-two. Um, and then on another year, twenty twenty-three, it's too long, guys. We either gonna use the power that, that the council chair had, had talked to me about in there, he said, you guys don't realize how much power you have. We are here to represent the people, the people have a strong voice. Wine I, you have a strong voice, that's why we're here, we making things happen. If we're gonna sit here, Uncle, I love you and everything, but I wanna get this on the agenda, because this is gonna open up on beacon or, even though we get pushed back, the people, eighty thousand of us can march down there and be persistent, just like Wagner seen, the chairman for the council, be persistent, be persistent. When I seen that, I started getting relief in my heart, because I know you have a traffic issue. And that traffic issue is, it, it causes a lot of anger, it causes a lot of things. There's so much issues that we're gonna cover, I just wanna get this on the agenda, Uncle. So are you gonna oppose it tonight, or you're gonna agree with us to get it on the agenda, and then we can further discuss this, this situation with all the key players? See, we, if we don't put it on the, on the agenda, we cannot get the key guys to come forward. They're gonna stay back behind a closet and, and call a shot, no, I want the guy up here, I want him right here on this microphone. I wanna talk to him, this is Wine I bought, we need to gain the respect on this Wine I bought, I am so sorry. I'm ashamed to see only twenty guys sitting down over here, we should have a room load over here. I'm very ashamed of that. So at this time, we already had moved, we already had the seconded, already called, called the question. I mean, any opposed, nay?
Perry opposed. You know, you mentioned about, I, I, I like the passion, uh, what you are speaking about tonight, that we have very long overdue projects that still continue to this day. However, you spoke about collaboration, and with the respect of the other board that being in their boundaries, um, we need to collaborate with them, because it would not be right, um, they come into our boundaries and decide for us. So you did mention collaboration, we need to collaborate with them and the residents that are impacted directly. Thank you, Chair.
Understood, uh, Mrs. Perry. I, Wine I is Wine I Coast, it affects all of us. But I'm gonna call somebody up here from the audience, from the Nanakuli Board. Please take your name in business.
Thank you, Chair, my name is Paul Io, from Nanakuli, Second Road, Lepekka Avenue. I've been back here since two thousand fifteen. I've been back here since two thousand and fifteen. Retired policeman. I'm on my Public Safety Committee for Nanakuli Neighborhood Board. And yes, take action. This will be the first time, if I'm not mistaken, as you said, that this board puts something on the agenda and work on it. Because that's the issue. The issues of transportation, that's the number one here for all of us on Nanakuli and Waianae. Just like this, this is Waianae Moku, separated by valleys. But there's a main road that goes between each of those valleys. And the one road that Mr. Lanford is talking about, and you'd mentioned, is Pa'akea Road. That would be a parallel highway to get traffic moving and moving quicker than what it is right now. Yep, from Halelua. Other than that, that, that was it. I just wanted to say that we will collaborate. We will collaborate.
Thank you very much, sir. So at this time,
There was only one opposition. And they're, and so, so, but they gotta be on, after the vote is taken, they gotta be on the prevailing end to bring it back up to now. So.
Okay, at this time, we're gonna take a vote on this.
Thank you, Uncle Paul.
Okay, we're gonna do them by roll call. Okay? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay? The motion has been approved to collaborate with the county. Get the keys, open them up so we can move these cars down here nicely, safely. Safety is the key factor here. Thank you very much. Got those two things on the agenda. Okay?
On record, Perry, no.
It's finished already? Thank you very much.
Record, Perry, no. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Perry. Okay, we got it? Okay, at this time, I'm calling DOT up to the mic.
Aloha, I'm Shalee Kunishige from the Hawaii Department of Transportation.
Hi, Shalee.
So, um, and diverting a little bit from our topic today, which is the Makaha Bridges Three and Three A. We can get you guys updates on the fifth lane project to Hakemo and the Pa'akea access road for the next time. Okay? And then, um, so what we're talking about right now is the plan for the Makaha Three and Three A replacements. So the work has been, um, going on off, off to the side of the road. But it's reached the point to where we can place the steel fabricated bridges, um, on the substructures. So that will need, for that, we'll need to, um, do some closures and some detours. So this brochure, um, this flyer gives some information on the tentative dates we have scheduled, which, um, could be subject to change based on the water line relocation. Because that's really important to maintain the water connectivity to the community. Um, what we are looking into because of the location of Bridge Three A, that will need a full closure. We can't do a detour around Keely Drive like we can for Three. Um, so we do have some folks here in red shirts that, from Anthology, that are here to take, um, take input and comment on any mitigation measures such as, um, like a shuttle or hotel reimbursement that the community might be able to use during this closure time. So, um, if there are any questions, can take, yes.
Please come up to the mic.
Can we get questions from the board first?
Hang on, hang on. We're gonna, we're gonna, questions from the board first, Elsado. Any questions from the board?
Yes. Hello, Shalee, thank you for coming tonight. So I was, I was looking at it and so it looks like that you guys are gonna be closing down from, um, on Farrington, right?
Yeah.
On this, and from these designated times.
So from Friday night continuously through Sunday night. Although if they finish resetting it earlier, we'll open it earlier.
And they'll just be open to, I'm assuming to residents that live Makai and Moka of Farrington that they can't go up.
So for, for the Bridge Three, they can take the detour around Keely. But, um, so for Three A, it's gonna be fully closed. There will be pedestrian access except for a very short window, like a couple of hours, when it would be too dangerous for pedestrians to cross.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
Chair, Kalay.
Recognized.
Thank you, Chair. Um, these dates are tentative?
Yes.
So the, obviously it'll be moving based on, um, your guys?
So the main, the main point is the water line relocation. So, um, we, in order to do that, we need to have coronation testing with border water supply. That usually takes thirty days. So as soon as that's all confirmed, then we can like definitively say, um, it would be September, um, fifteenth to seventeenth for the Three A closure.
Okay, the other thing is, um, I noticed you guys are here, our Neighborhood Board, but you guys mentioned Friday through Sunday. Have you been to Makaha Beach on a weekend?
No, but we are talking with, um, DPR and, um, State Parks, so we're.
Have you been talking to the other communities that would like to go to Makaha Beach on the weekend and realize that they haven't been informed about any of this? And then we have to deal with traffic on the weekend. And we've had, we've done, it has happened on the weekend when the Department of Transportation didn't coordinate lane closures and stuff. And traffic has been backed up for hours out here on the weekend.
Okay. Um, we do put out our weekly lane closure notices. In the case of like significant closures, we put out those notices ahead of time. Um, we would also target more park users in, in this case.
Uh, thank you. I'm sure you'll be here at our next one too, giving us updates.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Chair, Richard. Go ahead, Richard.
Did you guys notify all of the residents in that area of the closure for that period?
Um, this will be mailed to, um, all the households, um, identified by the US Postal Service in the area.
There's a strong community that, that comes from that particular area, especially with Buffalo Killan and them, um. I, I don't think they wanna, uh, swallow your, your lane closure for that period of time without them knowing.
I mean, the alternative is that we don't replace these bridges that were wooden bridges that were built in nineteen thirty-seven. And we lose, we could possibly lose connectivity, um, if the bridges fail.
Well, my concern is, it's been, it's been almost six years now since that bridge has been, um, uh, addressed or looked at or, or, you know, talk about fixing. Because I was one of the first guys out there, um, uh, doing some of the legwork. And, and, and i- i- it was always put back, put back, put back. And then now, um, I, I'm concerned because the residents out there, they commute over that bridge every day, sometimes two, three times a day. So, so i- it's a, it's a big thing you asking the community to do. But I will get on the phone tomorrow morning or tonight and let them know what's happening because, um, you, you should talk to the community and not, community and not just send them a flyer or stick one.
Yeah, our plan is also to do canvassing, but we wanted to bring this to the board first. Um, but we also do plan to do canvassing door to door.
Thank you.
And, um, this is not the first time we've repaired this bridge. We repair it, um, I think the last time was in twenty twenty-one.
And I believe, I'll just add to that. I believe it's a seventy-two hour process because I did talk to them outside. It's a seventy-two hour process. However, that can change because anything can happen, seventy-two hours, and it leads to more hours and more hours and more hours. So, uh, yeah, please. Thank you, Lanford. Uh, recognized.
Okay, uh, let me speak about this. Yet, uh, engineering has to reassess this problem because uh, there could have to be some type of emergency response. Because we have a dry mountain there. We have a lot of chaotic actions there that require HPD's response. And drowning and et cetera, et cetera. A lot of homeless in this. There's a lot of chaos. We have, we need another alternative emergency response or access twenty-four seven. That's my concern. I'm a K O resident there and, uh, the mountain is dry.
So we will be allowing emergency access over. So they'll put the steel bridge in place. But before they get it totally connected where it's safe for the community to use, it's considered okay for the emergency responders to go over there. So they will have access during the full closure period.
Okay, I have, uh, livestock on my agriculture property. How do I tend to my livestock and my day-to-day activities? I have to go back and forth. Okay, have to address that. Not only response, but the resident owners of the properties there.
So if you, um, if you haven't already, if you could talk to one of the folks taking the surveys and let them know your concerns and then we'll make sure it's addressed by the project.
Ma'am. Ma'am, we noticed that there was no, uh, direct contact on top of the flyer. Is there a direct contact?
Um, so that will be on the flyer that goes out. There's a, there's a, gonna be a call number. But we also have, um, our normal line, which is the five eight seven two one six zero. That's our public affairs line as well as our, um, general email box, the DOTPO@Hawaii.gov.
Five eight seven two one six zero. Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Chair, recognize it.
Aloha, I'm Kalay Salsado. The issue we've been having, three folks, has been going, this is an ongoing problem. Now, you said you're gonna inform the residents. The resident has not been informed on a lot of things, okay? You have the media, you have the TV, you have the power to go to the news, bring it up. You have the power to send your survey people out on the beaches, on the parks, city and state parks, okay? Because you have a whole bunch of homeless encapment that's run by state and city, okay? Which we are the stakeholders. But you're gonna compromise, once again, the lifestyle, the life of my kupunas out there. I always think, ma'am, I'm not a leader, I'm a voice. And I'll be damn if you folks think I'm gonna sit there and allow you guys to compromise my kupunas out there. Standard residents. The part is, you guys knew years ago. You guys knew years ago of the problem on the bridge. But nobody to- really took it seriously until something happened. Now you have surfers go, you, every day you have tourist buses goes there, every single day. There's only two lanes. Soon as you pass Makau Street and all that, there's two lanes, one in, one out, okay? From Makaha Beach coming out, then you're gonna have four lanes.
Mm-hmm.
For all these years, it's been elected. We don't want no more, no more. We want action.
So that action would be replacing the bridges.
Okay.
That's the action you're seeing when we replace the bridge. But yo, but you're not gonna have a twenty-four seven. You're gonna have a certain completely shut down. You're compromising the well-being and safety if there's an emergency for my kupuna. If somebody's having a heart attack or they get a dog attack or something like that, how is the nine one one? How is ambulance? How is HPD gonna respond to that?
Mrs. Salsado, can I, can I say something real quick? So there's a survey that they're taking and the questions you're asking is on that survey. If you can take the survey and then you can put all, um, what you, what you approve of, what you dislike and everything, and they have a survey. Please, can you do that?
I can do that, sir.
Thank you.
But all I'm gonna say, this is the same thing we've been facing. The residents out there.
I got it.
And we're the lesson to hear everything. And what they show at us, we have to accept it. That's not right.
Okay, Anthony, thank you very much. I really appreciate that. Moving right along.
And if you're listening closely to her, she said the steel bridge is gonna be in for emergency use only. So your emergency concerns is addressed. I need, I think sometimes you need to listen to what the presenters are saying. Because they were addressing that issue. Because the, eh, the steel bridge is gonna be in place, but it's not gonna be you, open yet for public use. Um, the other thing I, I, I wanna commend that the people is throughout the, the renovation of the bridge, you, you've had signage telling us, I live in Makau, so I see the signs. Then you warned us of all the different phases you're gonna do and things we, we need to watch out for. Um, one, one thing you might wanna do is some, some, you might wanna put some signs maybe in Nanakuli. So, so people that were planning going to Makau Surfing Beach during this time will, will know, eh, stay home, or stay, stay on this side. And, uh, and no go to Makaha Beach yet.
Yes, good suggestion. That's a good suggestion. Okay. All right, Uncle, thank you so much. Uh, Joe Jordan?
Mahalo. Um, hopefully you can hear me. Yes.
We can hear you.
I didn't hear, um, the presenter actually say any particular date or month when this is going to happen. Um, can somebody please clarify that first?
September is the, is when they want to have this thing happen, yeah.
Tentatively scheduled for the, for, for Three would be Friday, September eighth, from eight thirty PM through Sunday, September tenth at eight PM. And for Three A is September fifteenth, again a Friday, eight thirty PM through Sunday, September seventeenth, eight PM.
So currently Three A is the issue. Is that what I'm hearing?
There's no, there's no detour for Three A.
So, um, uh, just to let you know that we've been having many discussions regarding the bus transportation out in Makau area, which is on the, on the side of, um, Makaha Surfing Beach. And there is a large ridership out there. So hopefully you guys can address that with those particular riders. Um, um, I do know that when DTS, Department of Transportation Services, sent out a survey roughly two years ago, half of them were returned unopened. So I would greatly encourage that you go and knock on those doors out there. Uh, my auntie, who is about eighty-three years old, lives in K O, and I'm very concerned with that. So, um, I hope we work with, as Mr. Endo has said, the Makaha beach boys. And we don't have any conflict with beach activities such as a surf meet in that particular month. So, um,
Thank you, Joe.
I look forward to working with you. Mahalo, Chair.
Thank you, Joe. Yeah. Okay. A second one, right? Sarah Lugman, eh, hang on. Any other community, um, members wanna talk about the, the bridge, the number three and all of that? Okay. Seeing none. Moving really long. Presentation five point two, Oahu Pentathlon Overview and Route. Is Sarah Lugman here and Mac Kurran? Sarah Lugman? And Mac Kurran? Are you here? You got two minutes.
Chair, Chair, Kalay.
Chair, recognize it, Wilbur.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I just noticed it online. Some people had hands up regard, I guess they had some questions. Um, one Kapua, Kilikoa, Kamai. Sorry about that.
We're not finished with that. Is that concerning what we just talked about? We're not finished with that, is that concerning, what we just talked about, the bridge? Okay. Yeah, click on one then. You know what? I recognize Kapua, Kilikoa, Kamai.
Mahalo, chair. Uh, congratulations to all of you.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you for volunteering and for serving. Um, like you folks, we have had previous boards that have actually worked on transportation. Uh, Mr. Landford being one of them and Mr. Calvin Endo being around for many of those boards. Uh, many, a lot of effort has already gone into what they are finally doing at this time. Especially during, uh, Joe Jordan's time and her term as our representative and even before that. That's just an example of how long it actually takes for things to get done. Um, like Joe had mentioned earlier, I also did not hear the dates. But fortunately, being at home, I am able to look it up online. So there is some validity to the over 20 of us that are in the room with you via Zoom or in this case WebEx. So, um, please do not belittle the people that are tuning in to include the former board chair, Shar, who's off island and hours ahead of us. But regarding, um, the Bridge 3 and 3A, I'm so glad that we're finally getting to a point of where they're gonna take action. But public notification, especially of those residents, are key, very key to ensuring that they can plan their lives accordingly for those weekends. So if the DOT does not get a response from the known owners, then they need to make efforts to go door to door to those owners. Uh, also, I think we could perhaps try and coordinate with our outreach, our houseless outreach services to see if they might be able to facilitate a notification for those people that stay out there, it's just so important so that we minimize the likelihood of emergent conditions that may occur. Now, for our visitors that come and they haven't seen the signs and hopefully it'll be at least two weeks, three weeks notice, not only in the Makaha area, but coming onto the Leeward coast. So that all of us from Nana Kuli back here are aware of this and what's gonna happen, so that again, we do not plan ourselves to go to Makaha Beach. So I just wanted to add that and thank all of you for creating all the boards that we need. Thank you so much, mahalo.
Thank you so much. Okay, we're looking for the other person, uh, I believe the, the name is, um, oh my goodness. Is Mac Curran and Sarah Logman? Not here, okay. Moving right along. Do any of you out there have community concerns that you need to speak about? If you do, please approach the mic. Come on, John. One minute, John.
Again, my name is Johnny Yokiya.
Thank you, John.
I'm upset because I take myself out of my comfort zone to come over here, sit down and listen to argue with the people concerned. Yeah, for Nana Kuli over here. What do you guys come on the Zoom for? Why is that? You're not gonna be on my top here, it's officials. See, I can't tell the cover, what, what you guys doing up there?
John, we're gonna fix that. We're gonna fix that, John, because, um, it takes time to fix that because, I know. Uh, the officials should be on there and, and everybody else that has a community concern in the Wainai Valley should please come up. Community concern, Anthony, you got two minutes, please?
Mahalo, Kalei, this is the community concern. You know, we need to be focusing more on the safety, well-being of our community, okay? This, what I'm talking about safety is that our kupunas don't feel safe. A lot of them do not feel safe going to the stores because of the encapment we have.
Okay.
Okay, that's safety. We don't feel safe going to check a mailbox. I have kupunas who tell me, can you please go, when you come up here in Kau's side, can you go check my mailbox for me? Because they have the fear. Because their lifestyle has been compromised.
Mrs. Salcedo, are we talking about the, the, they're, they're not safe because of?
They don't feel safe because it's too much mental health and drug addictions out in our area. Let's all face it. It's not, it's not, you know, it's not helping when our, our community is being the holding tank. It's been a holding tank for the mental health services, drug addiction services.
I don't think that has been approved yet, but we're gonna have a lot of discussions on that.
Yeah, there has been an issue, even when, um, when they have the do-care partners and they say they did one survey, they do an account. Her count is incorrect and we need to address that.
Okay, and what I did was I, I, I read, I read that bill that was sent out to, to, um, create these mental health facilities on the Wainai Coast to, to serve the entire Oahu. That's a major concern.
And the other concern I do have, sir, just a fast quick one, I have a concern of conflict of interest. You know, the board members, some of them do have the conflict of interest, okay? You can, if you're gonna represent your committee, represent from your heart, don't represent from your back pocket to benefit you. The conflict of interest I have right now, I do have a big issue, is having Mr. Cross Crab onboard. He works for our lawmaker, he works for our lawmaker. We had issues for the community that's been common and supposed to be addressed. For some reason, it fell to the cracks. That's adding in a bit in the situation as well, safety hazard, so that's an issue I have.
Mrs. Salcedo, you got a good, you got a good question there. Uh, I did read the bylaws and the bylaws, the way the thing was written, um, it was conflicting, but I can point out, uh, the, the portions that need to be changed and revised. And that's what happens when, when the only, see, and, and here's why we make decisions right here. This is why the board needs to make decisions, is because of that. If we don't step forward and make the decisions, then how we gonna know until we reach there? And then we gotta revisit the bylaws. And the bylaws is the one that tells us what we can do and what we cannot do, guys. So when I read the bylaws on that issue, there was not an issue of, of a representative of any kind, about campaigning of any kind. However, I did read one part of that that should have been changed because it's conflicting. So we're gonna look at the bylaws on that issue before, but I thank you so much for bringing those things up. But the board, does anybody have any questions or any suggestions to what Mrs. Salcedo said?
As far as the conflict of interest. Um, I, I had a good, I had a concern as well, so, so when it came last month, we had a long. And you know, you gotta, you gotta see his heart and, and not judge him by who he worked for. Let's put it that way, so, so.
I'm always giving the benefit of the doubt, sir. I won't tell the board that, I will give it the benefit of the doubt. But when a safety hazard had been brought up onto the state level and it fell to the pukas, you know, compromising the well-being of my kupunas, the residents at the Kau, that's not acceptable because you have tourism, you have park users. This, when my family members has been mauled, there's another discovery on the park grounds was mauled at the same time.
But the thing is, you, you cannot put it on him for the person he worked for, right? He, he's, he's just a person, he, he, uh, the, the way we used to put it, he's the one in the garut.
I understand, Mr. Endo, but it was brought up.
You cannot judge, yeah, it, it looked, it, it looks like a conflict of interest, but I, I'm, I'm gonna give him the benefit of the doubt. I, I'm gonna watch him closely, uh, but I still gonna give him the, cause I, I like, like his heart and, uh, he's on our board.
Continue touching the heart, okay? I pray Akua continue touching the heart because this is brought up a year ago up to the state level, but it fell to the puka. So, that's all I have to say, but I do have faith in this new board. I like requirement and I like the new board and I'm gonna tell you one thing. People complain why we don't have enough people inside the room, before you should be packed. They lost faith.
They lost faith.
That's the part, they lost faith.
They lost respect, right?
I lost faith, but you know what? I'm gonna continue finding that faith with Akua's help. I'm gonna continue being a voice for my kupunas, my residents, for their well-being, safety. I'm not going nowhere, I live here. That's all I have to say.
Hello, I have two parts of this thing. Is, uh, all the unlicensed care homes came under the SB 1378. I hope the minutes of last board presented that for an investigation as well to SR 30 introduce partners in care to assist with the point and count of homelessness on our side. So you have to make note on that for the committee who's gonna do the homeless committee. But echoing what my wife had spoken about Gina. Yes, we had a, an email, a text message because I had dealings with the DLNR because of all the corruption, chaos that's happening at Kau's. The shooting, unethical hunters, okay? That started years back in 2021. Cedric Gates, uh, came to our neighborhood, uh, community at the park, okay? All that issues been with the DLNR all the way to, I spoke with DLNR and had a trace of, from what John Silverstein of the DLNR do-care of November of 2022, okay? That was because of unethical, I got him in video of this hunter's trespassing through my property. There's no hunting, I have no hunting signs out there, okay? January 31st, I sent an email out. Send, Cross Crab responded, I have a text message on that, I have a copy of that documented. Receipt of this email, we're working on it. To this day, there was no collaboration on this thing. No legislature on this thing. Right now, I need the neighborhood board, I'm moving, asking you folks right now, because I'm reaching out to Senator Gabbard's office for a meeting with all stakeholders, city and state. I'm asking you folks to hold a special meeting, special session for discussing this matter of this feral, this rogue dogs that's occurring at Kau's because of, they slaughtered my wife's pork pack goats, okay? Need to go into that, we need to maybe discuss it off this, this minutes right now because I'm reaching, reaching a time. But I'm asking you folks to collaborate for one special meeting to be held. And who can attend Gabbard's meeting with us, the state, city stakeholders, including, uh, uh, human society? Okay, I need one decision from you folks to who can, uh, come into this meeting. Because I spoke to Cross Crab, Cross Crab saying about decorum or platform. It's too fragrant right now, okay? So I got a problem with that. Are you gonna work for our state representative who did nothing? Or you gonna represent our community who does something? That's my, that's my beef on this right now, okay? That's what you guys have to put this on, on the microscope right now. He don't get paid here, he gets paid from Gates' office. So I got a problem with that conflict of interest in his position here at the community.
Thank you, Mrs. Salcedo, we're looking through that, yeah, thank you very much.
Um, chair?
Board member Perry. Go ahead, board member Perry.
Thank you, chair. So I have, um, three concerns. The first one would be about the tsunami that occurred in Japan, March 11, 2011. Now, Japan is talking about releasing the nuclear waste into the Pacific Ocean. That's millions and millions of treated nuclear waste into the Pacific Ocean, um, which have highly radioactive, um, components. So I don't hear anyone from DC or the state is, um, talking about this issue because it would impact the body of water which Hawaii lies. And we eat a lot of fish and we eat a lot of seafood, so that would in time contaminate the entire ocean and perhaps increase, um, the heat into, into in our environment. And we talk about climate change, this may cause climate change to accelerate. That's number one. Number two, the overdevelopment on Oahu, a lot of discussion about 10,000 homes. Uh, this is an island. It's gonna deplete our resources very quickly. We lack the infrastructure for that amount of people. That would change, it would accelerate climate change as well and increase crime. And lastly, I've been involved with this community 20 years and I'm, I'm, and I've attended neighborhood boards a, a many, many years. And I, I am sorry to say, I've never saw the board members nor the audience react to where they are doing tonight. So chair, it's, it's you that set the tone. Hopefully from this moment forward, we can conduct business on more calming and based on the neighborhood board plan, Robert's rules, sunshine law. And hopefully from here forward, attending meetings will have people feel welcome instead of being, um, bashed at. And everybody's concern is respected and collaboration, not dictatorship, but collaboration among everyone. Thank you, chair.
Mrs. Perry, thank you very much.
So invited next time to come be the, the welcome person, I said, welcome everybody, but that's not the main issue. My issue is you, but Munguara come a bit less much. You're okay, Abekaala. You weed whacking? And he brought up a history, one, a very interesting question, he said, "Kibara, what's up with the 200,000? They were allocated for a fire, break or whatever." Right, you remember? Do not forget that, brother, do not forget that. So I'm here on behalf of him, but I'm not here, named Eli, not Ice Barra, but he came from the heart. We don't want the 200,000 to get lost in the mix, brother.
Chair, chair.
Correct, you. Address you.
Chair, point of order. Um, so we currently, currently serving, sorry. It's currently serving as our neighborhood board member and cannot answer, um, any questions regarding Representative Gates' office.
Okay then, answer me with a Monday's day, or you guys.
So we, we will definitely take this in our notes and, um, NCO is also taking this down and we will forward that question to Representative Gates.
200,000 dollars, 200,000 dollars allocated for the fire on this side. Find out about that, no other bar, guess someone with the, they brought in one of these, what, what it doing?
Mahalo, uncle. Chair.
Go ahead, chair. Go ahead, press go.
Sorry, I know there's a lot of confusion at the moment. Um, I have the answer for the person, but I, I won't answer if I'm not allowed to.
Right now.
Okay, oh, and then also, am I able to bring up the concerns brought up against me earlier?
No, nothing like that, sir. And that's why, that's, that's the problem with, uh, with whose side representation because it's a point over order all the time. When you start talking about that business and John came up, talk about the business. He's a community member for us and for you, that discussion needed to be taken out on the side.
So I cannot engage, but everyone else can talk about me?
Well, it's not proper because according to the, the bylaws, we cannot, uh.
I'm, well, clarification, because I contacted the neighborhood board. I'm, well, clarification, because I contacted the neighborhood board commission office and I was told that there wasn't a conflict of interest. And also, the neighborhood boards of Uanu, Waipahu and Milalani have also had very similar instances as mine. So.
Yeah, and that's the, it's going to be the issue. We should discuss that at our executive meeting that we're going to have. We're going to call an executive meeting and we'll talk about that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, hang on. Hang on. Okay, the Chair is going to recognize Susan Gorman Chang.
Aloha, han mahalo, Mr. Chair and the board. I'm Susan Gorman Chang, I'm representing shutdown Red Hill Coalition. And have good news, thirty two of the thirty four neighborhood boards have submitted formal resolutions for not only the defueling, which is going to start in October, but for the permanent decommissioning of the fuel tanks, which are more than eighty years old. I know in April, I see that your Hawaiian Affairs Committee had that on the agenda, but I don't know what the resolution of that was. And if perhaps I could come to the, on the next Hawaiian Affairs Committee and present that again. Yeah, my understanding was I would go, we would go through the Hawaiian Affairs Committee and then if they approved it, it would come to the entire board. Is that the correct procedure?
Chair. Chair, this is. Board Member, Waialani, yes. Yes, I remember when she came in, Tiana was with me that, that, that I believe that meeting. However, like how you did tonight, is there a way that we can expedite that resolution? And put it on, put it on, vote on it to bring it up on a, on next month's agenda? So that we can, you know, we can, we can join up with the rest of all these other neighborhood boards that had adopted the resolution to permanently shut down Kapu Kaki. Is there, is there a way that we can expedite that tonight as, as you did earlier with other items? Chair, is that a possibility?
Okay, Koka, she can communicate with us offline. We don't really have to. We cannot go into discussion, we got to put that on the agenda first, but.
Yes.
You can email us.
Okay.
And send the contact information. Susan?
I can do that, yes, I can, I can email you. And can the Chair of the Hawaiian Affairs Committee maybe put their email in the chat? I didn't see it on the, on the website, on the Y and I board website.
Yes, Tiana, if it's okay, can you do that, Tiana?
Yes, we're going to put that in right now.
Thank you, Kiana, thank you so much.
Thank you, Koka.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, moving right along. Okay, here we go.
Still have community concerns?
Yes, go ahead.
This is regarding Makaha project. I was wondering, you're talking about the water line and I'm wondering, is the water going to be shut off? When you do this, are you repairing water lines at the same time as repairing the bridge? Or are you taking care of any other stuff at the same time? Like cesspools or any other roads, making new roads?
What they're doing is the water line, existing water line runs parallel to the bridge. So when they take out the old bridge and put in the new bridge, they need to put in a new water line with it. So that's what they're doing. We're not doing any cesspool work or any other road construction, just the bridge.
Will the water be shut off throughout the weekend? That's what I.
So what we're trying to do is get it set before. So I'll, I'll contact the project team and if I can get your contact information, I can get that back to you. Or would you like me to report that to the board? Okay.
Yeah, and that's a concern, yeah. It's a concern.
Okay, I'll get back to you with the, with the status of the water.
Appreciate that. Okay. Jermaine Myers.
Mahalo, Chair, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Mahalo. I heard the dialogue regarding a staff member of a legislature. According to the neighborhood board plan, I don't recall that it ever said that a staff member of an elected official cannot be on the neighborhood board. The only rule that it stated is that the elected official, because they have control over voting, over the taxpayers' budget, that's why, or making laws, they are the elected official. But staff members can be on boards and I'm concerned that you're having this dialogue that state is, you know, it's crossing over a specific line where you're diminishing the value of this board member. Also, I'm concerned that you're allowing Chair, you're allowing community member to speak and belittle people that are online. The neighborhood board plan allows for, and go ahead and read your agenda, at the top of your agenda, it states that people can engage online. And so I'm waiting for the NCO assistant that's sitting on your table to clarify these things that, you know, point of order, the individual who's harassing people that are online. And even to the point where calling people handicapped and can say that they can, should be catching the handy van. And you know, this is not the forum to be diminishing the value of our community members and our board members. So mahalo.
Thank you, Jermaine, I appreciate that. So what she's talking about is truly correct that I did read the bylaws. It did state what she said. But as far as a community concern, yeah, try to, try to not, you know, belittle anybody. Just, just, you know, just refrain from that. Thank you.
Turn it, sister. If I can put my face down here on the comfort of my home.
When order. When I'm of order, he cannot be aging like this, especially doing community concerns. It's not a back and forth dialogue. Neighborhood board plan says community concerns is a one sided way to the board. It's not the board back and forth to the members of the community. So this is out of order and if you're concerned about preserving time and integrity of this board, you need to stop that kind of outburst.
That's right, and you know what? We're going to work on that right now. We got, we got a frustrated community here. And with a frustration in the community and all we can do is be good listeners at the same time. Just be tentative of what we're saying and try to be respectful. Thank you, Jermaine, thank you very much. Yeah.
Mahalo.
Okay, Deshim, Deshim? Deshim? You got your hand up? Hi, Day.
Ah, yes. So I'm here to inform you about the community survey where you can talk about your community. So City's Resilience Office is developing City's Long Term Disaster Recovery Plan in collaboration with the Department of Emergency Management. So as part of the planning process, we are currently gathering insights from residents across the island with a community survey. So we would like to hear from you about needs, concerns and priorities related to disaster recovery within your community. So the plan will include a roadmap for how the city and local communities can build back better if a major disaster occurs. So I shared the link to the project website and the survey in the chat. So if you are not, if those who are not seeing the chat, you can go to the project website, www.resilientouahuboard/disasterrecovery. And if you want printed copies, you can email resilientouahu@honolulu.gov or call eight oh eight seven six eight two two seven seven. Again, seven six eight two two seven seven for printed copies of the survey. And I'd like to ask that you please take a few minutes to complete the survey and please share the survey with your network. So that's all I have today, mahalo.
Any questions from the board?
Uh, Kala.
Thank you so much.
Chair.
Go ahead.
Mrs. Day, could you include that information in your, in the comment, in the chat? So that other people can, can see it.
She did already.
Oh, yes.
Does she have your, does she have any board email? If not, could you take down my email and send me that information so that I can follow up on it? My email is Kala. Okay, it'll become, it'll come up in the chat real soon.
Okay, we send it in the chat. Thank you.
Yeah, I will send you an email, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, you take care, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other community concerns? No? All right, thank you, moving right along. Monthly reports, item seven, three minutes each, including the question and answers, seven point one, water supply. Christopher Sugimoto.
I'm here, Chair. Hello, everyone, I'm Chris Sugimoto from the Honolulu Board Water Supply. As you can see, I have my camera working now, my camera looks finally fixed. So here on out, you can see my beautiful face. Let's see, I could share the reports so everyone can see.
Please, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, so for this month's report, so there was no main breaks for the month of June to night's general water announcement. The first topic is an update on the MacArthur Street Pipeline Project. So the project work began on Tuesday, June twenty seventh and involved the replacement of approximately fifteen hundred feet of water mains along MacArthur Street from Mill Street to Y and I Valley Road, fifteen hundred feet of water mains along Kavili Street from Okuku Street to the end of the road and five hundred feet of water mains along Alameki Street from Wybe Street to the end of the road. So the work, the rope work hours for MacArthur Street, Monday through Friday, seven thirty AM to three thirty PM through early August up until school starts. And then once school's in session, the working hours is Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, eight fifteen to two PM. And rope work hours for the Kavili and Alameki Street is Monday through Friday, seven thirty AM to three thirty PM. And tonight's topic is a smart irrigation month. So July is a smart irrigation month when outdoor water use typically increases with an abnormally hot and dry summer and below normal rainfall. Please be your partner to use less water by installing a weather based irrigation controller device. We have a rebate for up to a hundred dollars in the BWS. You can install a rain barrel, collect spring water and hold it for later use. There's a qualified rain barrels can get up to a forty dollar rebate from BWS order before nine AM to five PM and, oh, sorry, nine AM and after five PM. And inspect your irrigation system for leaks or misdirected broken sprinkler heads. You can find out more at www boardofwatersupply.com/irrigation. That's the end of my report. Does anyone have any questions or comments for BWS?
Hi, Christopher. Christopher, can you email that to? What email do you want? Can you forward that information up there? I can hardly read that, I would like to take a look at that.
Oh, yeah, definitely, which email would you like me to?
Okay, we're going to type it in, what's your email? Hang on.
She put it in the chat.
Okay, I'll send an email right after.
She's, she's putting in her email.
Chair, I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Hey, Chris, that water main break on MacArthur, is this the last time? Because I've been, I live up Mill Street and I see the sign again, so it tells me it broke again. And you know what I mean? So how many times have this one? So are you guys replacing that whole lane? Because it keeps on popping, popping, popping in different areas of that lane, right? So I'm assuming that's what you're doing now?
Yeah, so the entire thing, we're going to be replacing the entire transmission main.
Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you, Chris. Any other board members? Any concerns with the Wilbur? Go ahead.
No, it's just pointing out that Johnny May is online. Thank you, Chair.
All right. Janomee?
Thank you, Chair. Chris, you know with all the numerous water main breakage island wide, maybe the water, water supply can invest in something to recoup some of that water, some truck or something to, to recoup some of the water loss. That would be my comment, thank you, Chris, good to see you.
Good to see you too, Janomee.
Thank you, Chris, moving right along. US Army Garrison Lieutenant Colonel Pat Yun. Thank you, Chris. Okay, moving right along, US Navy Victor Flynn, Danny Hayes.
Hi, good evening, this is Major Chris from Allis, dialing in for Lieutenant Colonel Pat Yun, who's traveling in Australia. How can you guys hear me, over?
We can hear you.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, I'm sorry I dialed in a little bit late, got delayed by a few other meetings. But we are, we are standing by to hear any concerns from the community related to any, any future training going on and I will relay that to the Garrison Command or any other issues that we need to discuss, over.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
Chair, I have, I have a question.
Go ahead, Koka.
So today I noticed a tugboat that was, was tugging, it looked like it was a military, military ship. And it was, but all the markings was all painted over in gray. And I livestreamed it and it was a pretty big ship and I don't know if people in Y and I seen it. You guys probably did see it today, but it was being towed. Looked like it was going, going towards Kauai and then it made a U-turn and it came back. And I'm watching this from Kane Leo Point, outside of, they know outside of Pukai Bay. So do you folks have any input on that? That's my question. Aloha, thank you.
Uh, yes, sir, I'll defer to our brethren from the Navy. Is anyone from the Navy on, over?
Okay, got it, defer to Victor Flynn or Danny Hayes? Go ahead.
Aloha, Chair. Is this about this specific question here about the ship?
Yeah, exactly.
Oh, okay. Uh, yeah, I'm not, I'm not familiar with the ship. What, what did it look like again, sir? I, I didn't get a chance to hear all of that.
It looked like a, maybe like a radar ship, but it was pretty big. And I can send you pictures, Daddy, I have pictures, I can send you pictures, I can send Victor pictures.
Okay, um, yeah, if, if not, what, around what time was it? And I can just ask.
It was all day today, it was like from eleven o'clock all the way to this afternoon. Like five, five thirty.
Okay, yeah, I can, I can ask.
Mahalo, thank you very much. US Navy?
Aloha, Chair, Danny Hayes with the Navy Region Hawaii. I'll be going through to help save time, I'll be going through the notes. We sent the full report in earlier, so I'm going to hit some of the highlights. The Department of the Navy and Defense Logistics Agency in partnership with the EPA are inviting members of the public to attend the planning meeting for the information with the Red Hill Bulk Fuel Storage Facility. It's, this initiative is called the Community Representation Initiative. It's going to be on July twenty seventh. Basically, in a nutshell, what it is, is the two thousand twenty three administrative consent order. This is an agreement between the EPA and the Navy. They ordered the Navy to be more inclusive of the community. So what they're doing is on July twenty seventh, they're going to open up at the Alumanu Middle School from five to seven PM, opportunity for the community to go and to become representatives when they start having discussions. um, when they start having discussions about what's gonna happen after de-fuel. So, um, this is, um, this is what happens when, um, the EPA has the Navy listen to the community. Um, this is the result. So there, it's a good opportunity for community members to go to the Alumanu, Aliamanu, uh, Middle School. That's in the Salt Lake area. So five to seven PM. Um, we, uh, provided the link, um, with more information. That's in the, uh, the, the rest of the report. Um, so moving on, um, speaking about, uh, water quality. So the Navy has completed its first year of the Long-Term Monitoring Program. Um, this is a inter-agency drinking water system team. Uh, they developed a long-term monitoring program, um, for the reports on that. Um, there's a link at the, uh, Joint Base Pearl Harbor Hickam Safe Waters dot org. I also provided that, uh, link in there. Um, that, that gives out the report. Um, we're about to begin period six of the Long-Term Monitoring Program that started this month. Um, for community members who are having a difficult time reading some of that technical information, um, uh, we've, we've had representatives go out to the, the Big Navy Exchange at one point and, and provide information. Uh, truth is, no one's been showing up. Um, and then we started hearing that residents on base, um, didn't have that information. So now this, this upcoming one at the Hickam Exchange, they're gonna be doing it. And that's more for people who live on base right there. Um, but they're gonna try to do back and forth. They're gonna try to be able to schedule, um, at the exchange where everyone can go and they're gonna start doing it on base. So, um, that's, that's to give an opportunity to show people how to read that report. Cause, uh, sometimes it might be confusing. Um, and yes, and then, um, yeah, that, that, that's all. Just, uh, uh, next I have, uh, Mr. Flint with the rest of the.
Uh, with that said, uh, so are we relying just on the neighborhood board, uh, to pass out the information or because I heard you say that nobody's been showing up? Uh, how are we communicating? Uh, so thank you, but, but coming to Wine I Board and hopefully everybody on the Wine I Board is, is online or on, on to, to actually look at this, um, and to get the information, but it, it's always been the, the problem, uh, with communications, Mr. Hayes, that a lot of times, um, I know door-to-door is very hard. Um, and nobody wants to walk outside and, and go door-to-door. Uh, but all that information, yeah, they're not showing up because there's so many, uh, aspects to that. But thank you very much, Mr. Hayes. We do have the information. Uh, my secretary wrote down everything that we need and I hope, and, and the minutes is being created by the NCO over here. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. We also have, uh, Mr. Victor Flint with the, uh, rest of the report.
Okay, Mr. Flynn. Thank you.
Thank you, Danny. Aloha, board. Welcome aboard, Chair. Victor Flint, Public Works. Uh, from June through November is hurricane season. Navy is participating with other emergency response agencies, agencies with Hurex drills. We pray for the best, but we prep for the worst. July fourth celebration at Pearl Harbor, food fun, fireworks at Pearl Harbor, over fifteen hun- uh, fifteen thousand attended. A great way to spend the day. Koli Koli Pass is clear and passable in case of a emergency and what was brought up earlier, dealing with the bypass road, we have one right now. That's the Wayne Island Coast Emergency Access Route. It's, uh, licensed that the city has, the Navy, to use that route in case, uh, Farrington Highway is blocked. They don't have to ask mother, may I? They can just declare an emergency and open the gates. They have the key. Interesting thing that was brought up earlier tonight, Chair, deputizing the board to where as part of the city, if you see a declared emergency and work with the police, it's possible that could help expedite opening the gates. Other parts of the discussion is a twenty-four-seven bypass route. That was brought up with our city council, our state rep and by some of the board members. Uh, that's fine. We would need to reword the license or draw up a new license with the Navy or work a deal with the city. But you don't have to start and reinvent the wheel. We have all the pola pola. We have all the history. It's all for you to review. I can forward whatever information you would need to help expedite this thing.
I want that, sir.
That's all I have. Are there any questions for myself or Brother Danny? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Flynn. Very helpful. Questions on the board? Moving, moving right along. Okay, at this time we're gonna move to elected officials. US Representative Jill Takura. Okay, moving right along. Governor Josh Green's representative, Stacey Lynn Eli.
Aloha, board. Congratulations. Uh, welcome, Chair. Um, Stacey Lynn Eli with, um, Governor Josh Green's representative for this board. Um, going forward, now that you folks have your chair, I will forward an electronic copy prior to the meeting so that for members who are online, you can share that, share the newsletter with them, Chair. Um, also for the new members, I wanted to share, um, contact information for the governor's office. So phone number is eight oh eight five eight six zero zero three four. Email is gov dot communications at hawaii dot gov. Um, the website is governor dot hawaii dot gov. Um, it's also on the back of the newsletter that we just circulated for you folks. Um, in respect to the short amount of time and that because we have a representative in the room, I'll just get to the newsletter. Um, I did wanna share and, um, express how excited we are for the homeowner assistance fund program expansion. So the homeowner assistance fund program has announced this expansion. Um, the max, well, the significant, the four significant ways has been expanded is the maximum assistance amount per household has been increased to sixty thousand dollars from thirty thousand dollars. Um, forward non-outstanding payment mortgage assistance is available for up to twelve months from six months. Homeowners do not have to be delinquent to qualify for assistance and re- uh, reverse mortgage homeowners are now eligible. Um, at this time, board, if you have any questions that you would like for me to take back to the governor's office or concerns, I can take them at this time. Thank you.
Board members?
Um, thank you, um, for attending our meeting and bringing us that date. Um, it's exciting. Um, I just, I think more about homeowners assistance, um, program. Uh, but there is about three concerns that I've received, um, in regards to community reaching out to governor's office, um, regarding whether their electric is being turned off or is about to be turned off or, and so these are multiple phone calls that I've received personally, um, in regards to them not getting a response back or phone calls back. Um, and so I just wanted to, just maybe we can collaborate offline on where we can address that and move that to, um, but just so that you guys know that, that is what's coming back. Is that the phone calls are not being returned or they're not getting assistance or help in those areas.
Thank you. I will share that with the governor's office and yes, we can work online if they, if you have their contacts. If you wanna share them with me, I can forward it to his office as well.
Go ahead, Ganaban.
Hey, um, just a concern. I guess I got a email regarding Ho'omau Ke'ola, which was a, um, pro rehabilitation program that was located on the Wayne Island side for years, um, that has gone, uh, to the wayside. I mean, I guess the email I got, you know, it brought up and the state has asked for them to produce their records. But it's been a program and it's gonna affect a lot of people who's gonna be homeless because there is, or actually gonna cause more problems on the streets because there were a big presence in, in, um, what's it called, having these residents rehabilitate as well as to the farm, farm base that used to help out with the farms and community stuff in this specific program. And if it, if it, you know, goes away because it's, it's a current delinquent state with their current reps, um, is that can the governor look at to something to shore something up in place? Not saying emergency programs, but you know what I mean, to help out with the situation because it'll affect his homeless program. It'll affect the people on our side.
Okay. Thank you. I will share that.
Chair, can I comment too?
Go ahead, Koka.
I too, um, got that email that Board Member Ganaban got too about, um, the mismanagement of Ho'omau Ke'ola. The one individual who is, according, you know, is under investigation and we're, and, um, I think they're seeking like a lawsuit. However, um, the state, I believe the state is involved and so we can get some clarity on, on the status of that. Because like, like Board Member Ganaban said, you know, um, the Hui that I, I am alakai for, Hui Kuli Kikaku, we're in collaboration with Kala Farms that we're, you know, and as a homesteader, we're, we're up there at, at Kala. This, um, this past Sunday was three hundred twenty-seven Sundays we've been doing over eight years. And the vital mission for Ho'omau Ke'ola is, is the reintroduction, reclamation of Kanaka identity for, for these people that are, that were incarcerated that are coming back, being introduced back into society. And I hope, and I believe in the mission statement of Ho'omau Ke'ola was to be reintroduced back to the culture and, and so this individual who apparently got no votes, um, didn't, didn't ask for any votes from board members and disappointed herself, um, stopped these, these people that are being reintroduced back, especially these Kanakas that are being reintroduced back and reclaiming their identity as Kanako Ivi true. Working in Pele Lukui Kaloi. Pele, you know, the work in the lip, the work in, now she had stopped them from coming up there. So I, please Stacy, if, if we can get some status on that because, you know, like, like Board Member Ganaban said, Ho'omau Ke'ola has been around for a while and they're based on, off of, off of, um, rehabilitating, you know, opening venues for, for people that are, that were previously incarcerated. So if we can get the status on that, please, we would, you know, we'd love to hear the, the update because the state was notified on that. Thank you.
Okay, mahalo.
Any other concerns on the board? Thank you, Stacy. Appreciate that. Mayor's rep, Don.
Aloha, Chair and members of the, um, board. Can you hear me okay?
Uh, kinda soft.
Oh. Me, oh, can you hear me better? Yep. I'll just yell. Okay, thank you. So I'll go quickly through some of the issues that came up last, uh, time. There was a question about if there are ten residents or more on a private road, what is the process to have the road turned over to the city? This is with regard to, uh, road near eighty-five, five eight zero C Wayne Island Valley Road, which is experiencing problems with homeless. The normal process to have a private roadway be turned over to the city is for the roadway to meet city standards and to have a roadway dedicated to the city and approved by the city council. Issues involving problems with homeless on private roads may be resolved through the issuance of trespassing onto the private property. Uh, water issues, member rate, members raised a concern about Kunia's water and the aquifer running under both sides of the mountain at Kunia and Wayne Island. Would like to know if the city has an update on status of water. Border Water Supply reported that the EVO Kunia and Wayne Island Aquifers are managed separately according to the State Commission on Water Resource Management. The status of water in those aquifers remain unchanged. For your information, Border Water Supply is moving forward with the update of the Wayne Island Watershed Management Plan. Public outreach meetings will be forthcoming. There was a question about, uh, unpermitted structures, loud noises, et cetera, at a church property located at eight five five nine six Wayne Island Valley Road. What is going on there? On June sixth, DPP Building Inspection conducted an investigation and revealed an active notice of violation issued May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one for construction of fifty-eight feet by ten feet plastic structures. The NOV was referred to basically our fines branch. Um, and then another NOV was issued by the Residential Code Enforcement Branch of DPP for occupying the structures. And per a letter by former DPP Director Dino Chita, the mayor's office is taking the lead on the investigation. Loud noise complaint should be referred to State Department of Health Noise Section at eight oh eight five eight six four seven zero zero. There are no new building code violations observed at this time. Uh, and then there was one last question about a resident raised eleven seventy Farrington Highway, uh, concerns of a mental health facility. If anyone was made aware of that, um, DOH approved operations. Why is the state approving? Is there a conditional use permit? It's an arch by the DOH. There, there was a building permit number one seven six zero nine one issued to allow a, a medical clinic on the site on January twenty-eighth, nineteen eighty-three. Further alterations to the structure were authorized, uh, under building permit eight zero five six zero seven. Medical, medical clinics are permitted principal uses in the B-two community business district. Therefore, no conditional use permit is required. And then lastly, we just wanted to announce that this Saturday, July fifteenth, at the Wayne Island Farmers Market and the Nanakui Open Marketplace, uh, there will be a community visioning work, uh, pop-up on the Wayne Island Sustainable Community Plan. And we hope that people will come and provide their input. Other than that, uh, I can take any questions or comments from the community to take back. Mahalo.
Chair, um, Don, could I just get that number you stated, five eight six?
Okay, let me see. Sorry. Five eight six, this is for the, um, five eight six four seven zero zero for the noise complaints.
Mahalo. Yes.
Perry? Mrs. Perry?
Thank you, Chair. Hi, Don. Thank you for making the announcement about the Wayne Island Sustainable Plan um, that will take place this Saturday at the Makaki Market Wayne Island Mall. Um, also, the concern which you addressed tonight, uh, on address eight five five nine six Wayne Island Valley Road, this is an ongoing investigation by DPP.
The one for the use is being investigated by the mayor at this point.
By the mayor?
Yeah.
Okay, if you could be so kind to update us every month because this one resident, that it was her first time to the neighborhood board and, um, she was really concerned about how the, the church, Cedar Church, so I guess the owner of the property had bought in, um, the labors to work on the farm, have now created a quiet neighborhood to chaotic. And these workers came from Kalihii, from Rep Mizuno's district, and they were, um, unsheltered. So if that, we could continue to have an update, um, report on this. And also, what, what is the mayor's plan about population on Oahu? Because I really don't believe, um, you know, you, you add more housing, more development, um, you only bring in more population, more crime. You know, this forty-ninth states have examples of overpopulation and what they have to deal with. I don't understand why Hawaii replicating some of the negative projects and bringing it to Hawaii, especially Oahu. We don't, we have insufficient infrastructure, insufficient resources. So to grow the community, it is not a smart idea if you don't have Plan A, B, C in place to how to counteract the increase in population, the increase of climate change, which the city has an office for that. So all this talk about climate change, it's just talk and then corporate America do business which create climate destruction. So, um, there's a lot of misleading information about trying to correct something when. when allowing corporate America do what they do.
Exactly.
Thank you, Don.
Yeah, thank you so much. We only got 10 minutes left. I hope you guys keep in check of that time. So, we're going to move right along.
Chair, can I just ask, Don, just a quick question?
Go ahead.
Hey, Don, good to see you again. So, that number that Tana Wilber, Vice Chair, Board Member Tana Wilber asked was for the sound complaints?
Noise complaint.
Okay, so how does that work? We call that, that, that number? What is the protocol? Are they, whoever receives that call is going to call HPD? Or what, what happens?
I'm not sure. Yeah, I can find out. It's the State Department of Health Noise Section. I can get more information.
Yeah, can you please, can you, can you please find out about that? Because they give, you know, we get some, we do have some unruly neighbors that just don't have, you know, concept of being a, a good neighbor. So, we just call 911 or we just call, you know, HPD. But if, I would like to find out what is the protocol on that, if you can. Thanks, Don. Mahalo.
Thank you very much. Don, I just have one more question for you. The permitting you talked about for the mental health facilities, is that the one you were talking about?
Um, yeah. 1170 Farrington Highway.
Okay.
Yeah.
And Makaha? Or just 1170?
Yeah, I'm sorry, 841170 Farrington Highway. I'm not sure exactly what part of Farrington.
And that has been approved already?
So, it was permitted back in 1983 for the medical clinic, and it's a, it's a permitted use by right under that zoning B2 Community Business District. So, they don't need a CUP or conditional use permit if they were to continue that use.
Thank you, Don. Appreciate that.
Sure.
Okay, community? Go ahead, Auntie. Yeah.
Yeah, this is my third meeting, coming to the community neighborhood meeting. And I've gotten really more upset because things have not changed. And for my neighborhood, just between the last meeting and today's meeting, the, the situation there has just doubled, tripled. And so, for me, I need to understand why DPP cannot notify the neighborhood when there's a big project that's going to be coming up. The homeless situation, yeah, okay. I'm, I sympathize with them for being, you know, homeless. But what the owners of the property have done is they have excavated alongside the road 10 feet deep without a permit. And they were, I believe they were refined for that, but nothing has been done. They did not put up a retaining wall. And so, that roadside where they excavated is the roughest part of that road right now. That happened in two years' time, okay? It was a nice, smooth ride down. Now, it's the bumpiest part of the road where they excavated. And they did not put up a retaining wall. And you can see the side of the road going down into a hill. So, I can't understand why that has not been taken up. And then, within the last month or so, the Mountain View Property that owns the property on the other side of the bridge, they started some sort of a project. And we've had, I'm talking about big dump trucks, 16-wheelers, 18-wheelers, back and forth, back and forth, every 10, 15 minutes. And it's just a narrow, it's a narrow one-lane road. And I'm pretty sure that's what's causing the, maybe the erosion underneath the hillside where they excavated? I don't know. But it is the, the roughest part of the road.
Auntie, Don, you, you heard that?
Yeah, it, are there addresses or TMKs that you guys can provide me and I can check on that?
Don, can we connect you and her together so we can address that? She can get the references from you, Don? Is it possible?
I do. I could not get an appointment with her. I was never, you know, offered any assistance. I asked for Don. The office staff, staff stopped me right there. I even went to the office to talk to her directly. I could not get through.
Don, did you hear anything?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm in meetings most of the day, so it's usually, it's not, it's probably because I was occupied, but I'm willing to meet. And I don't know if Jackson or Lyndon can give you my, give me your email, or I can give it to them and we can connect.
Please do, Don. If, do you have an assistant or somebody that can help the community issue with Auntie?
Sure, sure. But how, can I get Auntie's name or?
The NCO is going to take the information.
Okay, great. Yeah, we'll connect.
Please, Auntie. She going to connect with you.
Thank you.
She'll make it happen. Thank you, Don.
Thank you.
Hello, Don, this is Austin Salcedo. About that, 841170 Farrington Highway, Makaha Valley Road. In 1983, the area was, you said it was approved for medical use. I think he had evolved and changed into an, he used to have a doctor's office on the second floor, never a mental health clinic in 1983. Okay, so, is that one business or is this two medical businesses that's operating? I see it's looked like it's two different operations. It's not medical, it's more on the, well, we considered mental health facilities. You'll become under the medical, but more devaluation was the doors closes at 4:30 and the people were just roaming around on the sidewalks, their customers. So, that's where he's going to bring in the concerns up. He's just attracting the bad behaviors in the area.
Okay, Mr. Salcedo, Don, I know you've heard all that, right? Would it be possible to connect him with you, Don?
Um, yeah.
Yeah, to address that?
I got your email, Don. I'll communicate with you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Thank you, Mr. Salcedo. Go ahead, sir.
Hi, Don. My name is Kingsley Toloke, 15, from YNI. I has been trying and trying and trying to get a hold of Don. Don didn't even give a ten, give a time. So, let me read out my violation. They came from the city. In March 16, 2018, I got a violation from the city and county going to a wrong address in Wahihua. So, I got a call from the guy that received my violation for three years. So, he kuko my name, find out where I live, get my number. So, I asked him, send the city my right address. So, when the city sent it, in February, they sent me the violation. On the violation said that I need to call Perry Tomayo. I called Perry Tomayo for two months. And I got to a point I was so frustrated, so I make a video documented with Perry Tomayo saying on his voicemail, and it's on video. And then I told him on the video that I videoed this. So, one month later, I received a lien on my property together with a violation from Don Sinek for $2 million. Okay? And, and I has been trying to talk, talk to. I went to Anthea, which is the right thing to do because Anthea is taking, taking care of this place. So, I went to Anthea. Anthea tried to contact with Don. We was on the phone with Don. And I asked Don. And my, my question for Don. Don, did you get a signed receipt?
Yes.
You get a signed receipt from who? Because I didn't sign any receipt.
It's a certified mail.
Yeah. I didn't receive a certified mail. And who did you got the signed receipt from?
I'm not sure. I'd have to look into the records.
And I, and I has tell you, Don, that I want to keep this down low when I come to Anthea. I don't want the people of Hawaii knowing that you don't know what you're doing in office. And this is what you do. This is illegal and this is fraud, what you're doing in office. And you know that.
And then you have a long visit, a vacation, and fines.
You supposed to be followed.
One of order.
We got it. We got it. We got it. So, she's going to address that. Yeah.
I'm waiting. You can address while I'm waiting here. So, everybody can see and even the people of Hawaii see what you're doing in office.
No worries, sir. We're going to help you. This board going to help you. Thank you very much. I need all your information.
Don never came back to global.
I need you, John. Thank you very much. Stay right here because we're going, I'll, I'll be talking to you right after this. I need that information. Don't worry about it. Yeah. Okay. Okay, we're going to wrap up this meeting. I am so sorry.
Chair, get Joe Jordan on, with her hand. She's waiting.
Last one, Joe Jordan.
Thank you. Don, can you please tell me when the mayor took over handling the complaint for 85596 Valley Road?
I can find out. It looks like there was a letter that the last director, Dean Uchida, somehow the, the investigation was turned over. So, I'd have to find out.
Okay, I'd like to know that date because that's at least a year ago. So, I will email you, Don. Mahalo.
Thank you.
I, I move to adjourn the meeting. Do we have a second? Second? We're going to adjourn this meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting is adjourned.
Senator Wadey?
Senator Miley? Come to the meeting. Come to the meeting. Everybody over here. Make sure you invite everybody to this meeting. Need to get these, all these concerns addressed. You are represented.